There we go.
Let's call the regular meeting for February two thousand and twenty-one ZBA to order. Roll call please, Rich.
Maurice LaRosa.
Here.
Andrew Urbano Urbanoitz.
I'm here.
Mary Ann Turner, not here. Charles Masturberty.
Here.
Kelly Davis.
She's here, I see her.
Yep.
Didn't hear, but I see.
waving.
Robert Koznicki.
Here.
Catherine Plopper.
Here.
And Rich Strony, here.
All right, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance because I see the flag bind. Mr. Koznicki?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States. Which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible.
Invisible with liberty and justice.
I don't know if the other boards are still doing that, but I like our flag in our country, so we're gonna keep doing it.
Did you have a seat and an alternate?
Uh, yes, Mary Ann asked Rich to sit in for her. Um, we have no legal notices for the night, so this. We're gonna read these one at a time instead of all, so, um, Mr. Secretary, if you could read the first legal notice.
Sure, uh, ZBA number twenty twenty-one dash oh one dash thirteen, seven ten dash seven eighteen Enfield Street. Auto-location approval application for dealers and repairs and used car sales license. Melissa Gury, Kimberly Novak, co-executrix in the estate of Matthew Porcello, owners. Batool Express Incorporated applicants, map twenty-nine slash lot fifteen BL zone.
Do we have the applicant here with us tonight?
Yes, good evening, Daniel McKellick from Bacon Wilson. Office located in Springfield, Massachusetts for this hearing. And, uh, our office represents the applicant. And then we have a couple other Bob and Jay wanna say hello.
For the record, Jay Ursery, J R Russo and Associates. Here representing the applicant, we prepared the site plan that you have in front of you with with regard to this application.
Okay, um, you folks can go ahead with your presentation if you'd like.
Bob, did you wanna just chime in here real quick in case we have something to say?
Sure, Bob Corvo, Connecticut Hometown Realty, representing the applicant in the seller.
Excellent, thank you. Well, good evening, board members. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant to request an approval by the board pursuant to Connecticut General Statute fourteen dash fifty-four for suitability of seven ten, seven eighteen Enfield Street for an automotive use. Specifically, a general repair and for used car sales. Believe you have it all in your packets, but for a quick history, um, seven ten to seven eighteen Enfield Street was formerly known as Porcello's Garage. And recently owned by Matthew, as stated in the, um, opening file number, the notice number. And was a large automotive repair center with five bays, used car sales, seventeen employees, a few tow trucks, a car carrier. And a large impound lot in the back for storage for automobiles. Since that business closed down, past prospective purchasers desired to carry out the same scope of activities on what would be a very crowded space as two ancillary sites used by Matthew would not have been part of those operations. Here, the applicant intends a much more scaled back operation. And as we know, the site has been previously approved by the town for such licenses. It was the beneficiary of such a license as recent as May of two thousand and eighteen. The applicant desires to be a good neighbor and help to restore this property to what it was. And we have been in constant communication with the town planters office council and have appeared before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Due to the fact that the property has had prior approval for automotive use, we believe for multiple reasons that the board should approve the requested application tonight. First and foremost, there's been no substantial change in the neighborhood since the last approval was issued. Did some homework, some legwork for everybody, and most of the structures in the vicinity date back to the mid twentieth century. In my review of approximately twenty-five to thirty property cards. The residential neighborhood behind about three hundred feet or so, plus or minus on, um, Enfield Street each way across the street, I found fifteen of those structures were pre nineteen fifty. And most of the other ones were post nineteen fifty with the most recent being nineteen sixty-nine. The structures on this property in particular date back to nineteen twenty-four and nineteen thirty-one. And, uh, the use goes back in the records as back as the fifties as far as we can tell. But, uh, we're quite certain it was a, uh, a service station as early as nineteen twenty-four. Enfield, it's street itself is probably been widened and adjusted through this, uh, property storied history. Road layout and traffic patterns have not changed in any substantial manner since the last license was issued. Therefore, there's nothing to suggest that these parcels are no less suitable for an automobile automotive location than they were in two thousand and eighteen. In fact, I take the position that they're actually more suitable for automotive than it was for prior approvals. The applicants here intend to operate in, as I indicated before, in a much more scaled back operation. The applicant is reducing the amount of service base, has no intention of housing an impound lot. And is actually making certain improvements to the site to provide better traffic flow, which will in turn create a safer site. Although we have confirmation of a non-con of non-conformity for this site. In use from the CEO, the applicant went to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review. While that approval by its nature was limited to approving that there is no expansion of non-conformity, it was also confirmed that the property plan was going to make it more conforming. The applicant had two meetings with the PZC. At the first meeting, they proposed some items that they'd like to see in the plan. And while under no legal obligation, the applicant made revisions to their plan to address the concerns and the plan was approved. The plan includes striping of the lot for parking spaces, which currently there's there's none. Additional landscaping for buffers into black block certain traffic flows. Eliminating one of the bay doors, shifting one down and adding another one to the southern side of the building. So traffic can actually pass through the building, okay, from the seven ten lot to the seven eighteen lot. Rather than bringing cars around via Enfield and Carpet Streets. In addition, no, no parking signage would be added in certain areas. We have some large flower pot planters that we're looking to put out there to prevent, uh, parking in, you know, odd, odd locations or to interrupt some of the traffic flow. And, um, in addition, the lot will be repaved, the buildings painted and many other improvements that'll increase the safety on both the lots themselves and the surrounding streets and sidewalks. Therefore, we request that the board approve this application for suitability for the automotive use. As the site has been approved in the past, there's been no substantial change since those approvals. And the safety measures will actually improve since the last approval. I don't know if we wanna look over the site plan, I know there's a limited scope of review here. I wanna try to provide, um, the board members here with as much confidence that, uh, we've, we've done the best we can under the circumstances that we have. And this is more of a suitability for location, but there's, um, you know, other zoning concerns that come into play. And like I said, we've, we've addressed those with the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. Jay, I don't know if you are ready to put up a site plan, but we could walk through that if, if the members would like to. Uh, with some of those safety changes we talked about. Um, or if you have it in your packet and you're comfortable, we can, um, entertain any questions.
For the rec- for the record, Jay Ursery, I do have a plan we can put up if the, if the members of the board are interested in taking a look at it. I'm sure you've already seen it, it's in your packets.
It is in our packets, but I'd, I'd like to, to have you walk us through it. Um, this was, uh, a project that came in front of us before that had some safety issues and that's why it was actually denied before. So if you could walk us through the safety changes that you've made, just so that everybody understands them, it would be great.
Okay, let me, let me pull up our, our latest drawing here, I'm gonna make an attempt to share my screen. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Oh, I did it the first time, I'm getting better at this. Okay, so as we look at this and we're looking at the plan, we've got Enfield Street Route Five down here at the bottom where my cursor is. Carpet Street is located to the north over here. And let me just blow it up a little bit so we can see it a little easier and my eyes aren't what they used to be. So seven ten, which is the larger of the building, is located here, that's the main garage building, if you will. Uh, that Porcello's operated out of, and I think as Dan had said, and I think you saw maybe the narrative, there were, I believe, five repair bays or five lifts that were in the building historically, we're reducing that to three. And then over here is seven eighteen, which at one time was three apartments. Uh, plus some office space for used car sales, we're reducing that to two apartments and an office for used car sales. But essentially, in terms of looking at the plan and look at the, at the changes. In terms of aesthetics on the front of the building, there was a few things that planning and zoning talked about. And I think that were probably also concerns of yours in the last application in terms of vehicles coming in and out and being parked in front of the building and so forth, and maybe even backing out into Enfield Street into Route Five. So we made some modifications. And, and what those amount to is, if you look in this area here where my cursor is now, that was the area that when we go way back in years was the gas island, um, there were pumps there. And you could actually drive through from Carpet Street, come through here, come back out onto Route Five. And it essentially was all paved and it had been until very recent when the old underground fuel tanks were removed. It kinda got dug up then, it was, uh, there was some pavement removed and some concrete removed. And planning and zoning, and I'm sure you were as well concerned about, you know, basically being able to cut right through here and cars going back and forth. And they wanted to see some improvement aesthetically. So what we've done here is we're removing all of the remains of the concrete and the blacktop and this crosshatched area that you see here is all gonna be loomed and seeded, that's gonna become lawn. There's another area right in front of that where my cursor is now, that'll be a landscape bed. And that's gonna consist of, uh, some plantings and a bark mulch bed that'll be, uh, roses and I'm trying to remember what the other plants were now, to be honest, and I gotta go to the detail sheet to see it. So I'm not gonna jump over there yet, but we've got three flowering shrubs and then, uh, uh, roses between them. And then we've got a new concrete sidewalk that's up along the front of the building that allows access. And we've also extended that walk, there is an existing walk along carpet. And we've got a new walk that'll come down and tie into the walk on Enfield Street. So it makes it tied together without having to walk across the front of the property. We're also adding some planters in the front of the building, these round circles with peas are thirty-six inch diameter concrete planters and those will have annual plants in them. We're also adding some signage here in the front on this building and on the office building that'll say no parking fire lane, so we don't have cars parked in front of the buildings anymore, which historically they had been. Cars for sale, uh, probably, you know, customers parking there and walking into the building. We're gonna try to eliminate that totally, so we don't have the parking in front of the buildings anymore. So, uh, we're adding signage to the front of the building that says no parking fire lane and lawn with a planter here, 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 and also here down the side of the office building. So we think that that's a pretty nice improvement aesthetically in terms of what we're doing. We're also removing some pavement here in the back of the building. And that's essentially allowing us to regrade some of the area in the back. And as Dan had explained earlier, we're moving some doors around here. And I think what had happened here historically, when you wanted to get from the Carpet Street side of the repair garage and bring a vehicle around behind the office building side, you had to go around on the street. So what we're doing is we're moving some doors around, we're adding a new bay door here, removing one of the other ones over here. We're adding a new bay door here and a ramp so that the employees, when they're servicing a vehicle, if they need to go out and park that vehicle waiting for a customer to come pick up, they don't have to take the vehicle and go out on the street and go around, we can actually have a driveline now right through the building. We've got overhead doors that allow that access to do that. And we're adding a little, the two minutes ramp here to get us down to grade. And in doing that, we're removing some blacktop, we're gonna add some landscape stone here and some landscape stone here and here and around the side. And again, adding some more planters over here to, to it, just enhance it a little bit. And there's some blacktop there that just isn't necessary, so we're taking it out, reducing the impervious coverage a little bit. The change in the use, and as Dan had kind of explained, we're essentially uh, making the use a little less intense than it was, allows us to meet the parking requirements in the zone. You have in, in the zoning regulations, certain parking requirements based on the, the repair garage, the number of employees, the used car sales. And it requires us a total of, I believe it's eighteen spaces and we've got those lined out. We've got them designated here on this particular plan. So I think that was one of the issues before, that it was kind of a, I guess, a free for all, if you will, as to where anybody parked. Nothing was lined, there was no striping and we're going to be striking, striping the area, we're gonna be replacing the fence, adding some privacy slats. We're adding a dumpster in the back, which they never had before for trash. And again, adding the plantings in the, in the, uh, uh, lawn area here in the front to dress up the front of the building a little more and, and make it a little more aesthetically pleasing. So by reducing the intensity of the use, we, uh, reducing apartments, reducing some of the uh, service bays, it allows us to have enough parking to meet the, the zoning requirement. And as well add some aesthetic improvements to the front of the building and the side of the office building, which uh, planning and zoning recommended, as well as the no parking in the fronts of the building and adding those fire lane signs. So, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission was happy with this, as Dan had said, they, they approved this at their last PZC meeting. And we're hopeful that, that you folks here at the zoning board of appeals as well, uh, will be comfortable with the changes that we've made to this plan and, and hopefully vote favorably in the approval of this location for a, a motor vehicle license. So that's a basic overview. And if you've got anything else to add, or Bob, or if the, any of you commission members have any questions, uh, yeah, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
If I might interject for one moment, I know it was brought up that last suitability hearing relative to this property. That proposed applicant, it's my understanding that they asked for, um, six onsite employees, where here we're gonna have three. Five working bays, here we're gonna have three. They wanted display for used cars, four of them, um, right now our plan consists of two. They also wanted to maintain the towing business onsite, which we're not going to do. And they also wanted the impound lot for the towing business, which we're not going to do. And I think that's where, I mean, even, even though we're, it's a non-conforming use and we have these parking spaces, we wanted to make it fit as, as close as possible to what the code is. And if that prior applicant tried to do that, they'd probably need about, um, thirty or so parking spots. Uh, much more, you know, it's, it's a much more intense use that whole operation on this little parcel. I believe, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that, um, Porcello had two ancillary lots also that he used. Located just down the road, maybe six ninety-four and seven ninety, seven oh four or something that were part of the operation.
It was six ninety-nine and seven oh four, I believe it's six ninety-nine, he had twenty, thirty cars parked over there. And then across the street at seven oh four to the rear of the property on Carpet Street. He had room for another seven or eight cars, plus he had a building for storage over there.
So with that prior applicant duplicating that use puts the concentration just on these two parcels. So I, I think that, you know, we, we took all this into consideration when we designed this plan for safety, for parking, for the sidewalks, you know, there's, there's limited work we can do down by the Enfield Street side because that actually is, you know, city-owned property or, or state-owned property, so it's, it's beyond our boundary. Um, but we've done everything that we can relative to this, this space to make it as conforming as possible.
All right, thank you, are there any questions from the commission?
This Kelly, I ha- I have one, where were you have the, um, plan on the customers pulling in and out?
The customers would have a couple different options, um, the, the design here is meant that they could go through the Carpet Street, park there for their appointment, come in. And then their car gets brought in, it's fixed, and then it's brought out onto the seven eighteen side. However, you know, depending on how the, e- everything works out and how well business is going, the, the egress could be changed around where they come in from Enfield Street and then they would, they would park over here and then exit.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Where are the designated parking for the apartment occupants?
There's no specific designated parking right now, we've talked about having spots one, two, three, and sorry, two, three, four and five for them. And then the employees would be in the ones closer to the building and navigating around the ramp and making sure that everything's okay. So the, the apartment has gone down, right now it's a three unit.
Right.
And, and, and the plan includes eliminating the basement apartment, taking out the fire hatch. Which made the fire marshal excited, I believe, because those are, those are troublesome units when you're down in the basement. So, um, so now it's four spots that are allocated for the apartments.
The, yeah, question on this, so seven eighteen already has a K seven from previously, correct? That was previously approved and that, Mr. Chairman, is.
Well, that both properties had a K seven.
Yeah, our file only shows the seven eight or seven ten, the larger property with the K seven. And I guess my question for Lori is why are these two properties connected? Because they are still distinct properties, correct? They have not been combined?
They are two, they are two, um, properties that have not been combined, uh, but they have historically been used together. Uh, we do have plans on file that, that show, um, uh, to that effect. It's kinda similar to the way, uh, seventy-nine Enfield Street, which you just had heard, um, a few weeks ago. Has been used across for seventy-nine Enfield Street and Four Willard Avenue, just not combined. It's an odd, non-conforming situation that for some reason occurs along Enfield Street.
I guess, I guess my question and more for me to understand this one a little better. The K seven is typically one property at a time, it's not a combined property, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It typically is, however, this is historic in nature, is legally non-conforming.
Well, right.
Decision has been.
According to the state rules, would we have to issue a K seven for both properties? Because the state's only gonna do one property per K seven.
What I would assume is they would both be listed just to be proper. Just, just to remind the commission, um, since we had many discussions on non-conformities and dealers' repairs licenses, um, we did have that court order that came down in January that basically eliminated your review of, you know, the location, your schools, churches, theaters and traffic conditions with the highways. Basically said that your purview at this point is to determine whether or not the site has, uh, or the local area has substantially changed. Since the big, since this originally, uh, was our dealer's repairs license. So that is your purview at this time.
Understood, but the, the K seven was for seven ten, that's where I'm kinda stuck though. It doesn't list seven eighteen. So that, that's where I'm a little confused. And I real- I realize historically, these two properties have been kind of connected based on previous use. But nothing reflects seven eighteen in the K seven that we have.
Right, so if they're gonna use seven eighteen for used car sales, then seven eighteen needs to have a K seven for used car sales.
And as it stands right now, they don't, correct?
Correct. So I kinda think we need to look at both of these separately.
Why, Mr. Chairman, do we have to look at seven eighteen because there's already a Kevin, a K seven on file?
Well, we still have to say whether or not we feel we're gonna allow a K seven to continue, that's.
Okay.
Your fault. But I, we don't have an application for a K seven in front of us for seven eighteen. So the problem could, could sit with, if we give an approval tonight for the garage, he still doesn't have permission to, for used car sales on seven eighteen.
Excuse me, um, the application was put in for seven ten and seven eighteen. And if we needed to do two separate ones, I believe that my client would be more than happy to file two different ones and pay two different filing fees if that makes the, um, the, the board more comfortable. So it's very specific to the location. The board more comfortable, so it's very specific to the location. However, due to the. Commingled nature of these properties and, you know, and its history. I think that's why the the application was put in that way as it was. As as the two properties are identified essentially as one.
Yeah, and and that that goes to my question of. These properties were never. Joined together, right, for lack of a better term, so they are considered two separate properties according to the town. And 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 that's why I asked about the the difference between the two, again, we we've had it for. Seven for seven eighteen. Or seven ten, sorry, the larger one, seven ten in the past, I understand that one. And and I I certainly appreciate the the improvements that your clients have made, I mean. Much needed. I just have a question mark, Mr. Chairman, on the the seven eighteen side of of what's the best approach for that? Get given that, you know, this, you know, what Lori said before is we don't have. The five considerations anymore to take into account from the perspective of churches, schools, etc.
Well, I have a possible solution for that, but let's. Let's, let's, does anybody else have any other questions, let's get any other questions back. No other questions? You got anything, Charlie?
Uh, no, my, all my questions were the same as Rich's.
Andrew? Can't hear you, Andrew.
Hang on, how about now?
There you go.
Okay. On that seven eighteen building is the office use. Going to be part of the automotive business or is that going to be separate office space leased to someone else?
To my knowledge, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, the office space is going to be associated with the used car sales.
I believe you're correct, yes.
Got anything, Rob, got any questions?
Uh, no, I'm, the question about the the two parcels and the application being put in is seven ten, seven eighteen. Looking at a. The warranty deed and it and it states two parcels, but it's one warranty. Of deed for both. And so I'm just eager to clarify. The, I guess formality of the address and two properties and this application. No specific questions, though.
Here's my suggestion and Lori, you can, Lori or Jen, you can chime in and stop me or help me at any time. I feel we could probably move forward with the application tonight for. The automobile. Repair shop. And have the applicant file for the used car sales on a separate application. And I believe that the that could be done administratively, the used car sales. When they come in front of us, they wouldn't have to waste any more time. Because there's really nothing we would have to, I mean. That there's nothing for us to look at for that. Especially if the the mechanics facility gets approved. So I I if the rest of the board would have to agree with that, obviously, but. I I feel that's a viable way of taking care of this so that the applicant isn't held up. Anybody want to chime in?
I, um, I'll I'll chime in, I guess. We had gone over this two property issue with the planning and zoning commission as well. And. Historically, the K seven has, yes, said seven ten Enfield Street. The plans we have on file have always historically shown that. The seven eighteen Enfield Street has had accessory parking and things that are associated with. The seven ten use and the site plans all show that both properties in a nonconforming manner have been. Used together, so even though it was. The K seven said seven ten Enfield Street, I'm not sure if they just put that down as that was maybe the mailing address they used for the business. But historically, these properties have been used together. So if you're going to approve them, it's it's really just one K seven form, and if you're going to allow us to check the box for. Used car dealership or allow us to sign off on a form that has a box checked off for used car dealership. We, I mean, I don't, I don't, I guess I'm not understanding the purpose of separating them.
If you don't separate them, then you blanket both properties, both with a automotive repairers license. And a used car sales license. And they don't need a used car sales license for both properties, nor do they need automotive repairs license for both properties. They need the repair's license for one property and a used car sales license for the other property. So instead, I know it's been co-mingled in the past, what I'm trying to do is not muddy up the water, let's clean it up. So they need one light for one and one license for the other. So why, why not just give them what they need instead of just blanketing everything, saying have it have have the world and you don't need it?
Yeah, and and Jennifer, I think my concern here is, okay, right now it'd be the same owner, but what happens if it's a different owner and. You know, the end of the day, by separating it to what. You know, Chairman has said, I I think that does make it cleaner and and that, to me, especially since our our. Our town property shows them as two distinct properties. They should be treated that way. From the perspective of any K sevens or any other licenses. And and my concern would be if you blanket both, then at some point someone could come in and turn that. What is currently apartment buildings into a repair shop as well. My understanding of the K seven licenses.
And the applicant has stated that he's willing to do that, he's wanting to to break that off as a separate filing. And and I think that's going to be cleaner for paperwork and everything else from the state.
Excuse me. We're, we're happy to break it up to the extent that you need to break it up. However, we would need the. It it would apply to each parcel, both both licenses, the dealer and the repair. To each parcel. Because if we run into a jam later on with seven ten being the the street address, we need to be able to sell the used cars on the street address till we can get seven eighteen squared away. And the. Planning and zoning commission. Clearly stated at the last meeting that we can put used cars anywhere we want on seven ten. But they didn't know about seven eighteen also. So we're, we're investigating that, and as as Jennifer has said, these two properties, all the plans and the record. Are all tied together, so that seven ten identifier that we're looking at under the K sevens. Could simply just be the mailing address or how the state DOT is treating this as as one joint property. But we need the, the repair's license would have to be approved for both. Tonight. Because seven eighteen is an ancillary used to seven ten to make this operation work. And it always has been with the impound storage lot and the towing operation, it's been part of this. This process and there's clear evidence of that. And if you wanted to hold off on the dealers. Used car sales piece on seven eighteen for more information and do that administratively. That that I think could be broken off and and addressed, but. The other pieces kind of all have to work together.
Well, I don't understand why seven eighteen would need a repair's license. No physical repairs could be done on that property. They're going to be done in the garage on the other property. Though unless you're working outside.
It's tied into the operation though, sir. Because of the exit door onto that property, it might even be the entrance door into that property. All the necessarily. Code items that could come up or questions from DOT that could come up, we need that. We need both of them to be covered under that license. As has been in the past. To be sure that the operation can can be freestanding.
And Jennifer, Chairman, if I may, Jennifer, where, what is the full address used on the K seven?
I don't know if we have a K seven for this particular application yet, but I know in past K sevens, it has been seven ten. Let me pull up. File.
The the two documents in our packet both show seven ten for the DMV.
It doesn't show seven eighteen with the K seven. So. To to the chair, miss, to Rich's and the chairman's point. That this is. DMV requires that the exact address where the business will be conducted be on. On that K seven, that all records pertaining to the business must be maintained at that location. So. Does Chairman's point. Us approving seems to go against Department of Motor Vehicles. And does seem to muddy, as the chairman said, muddy up the waters. I I just don't want, will that, I'm just concerned that it would cause a problem for the. Possibly for the applicant down the road in some manner.
And I I think too, to what Lori said in the beginning of this related to K seven approval. It, she she mentioned something about.
Suitability.
Suitability, but also how it's been used in the past, right, and I would say that. The building on seven eighteen is not suitable as a repair location as it stands. And and again, that that's my concern about not treating these separate.
Well, but that's the problem is seven eighteen never been used for repair.
Right. And and based on that, it wouldn't. As as its own unique property, seven eighteen, it wouldn't fall under what Lori had said in the beginning and realizing we're not reviewing those other five components, but the. The suitability is not there from a repair perspective. And 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 this is in line with what the, you know, that other attorney, we had our special meeting. Kind of addressed as well.
So that's why I'm suggesting splitting them up the way I suggested it. And again, I think it makes it cleaner. And I think that, you know, the DMVs, I believe we're going to have to a K seven for each one of the properties.
Chairman. Clarify? And and maybe I'm confused now, but so to clarify, Mr. Chairman, so what you're saying is that. Seven ten, which is the northerly. Parcel.
Correct.
Would have the dealers and repairs license.
Correct.
Dealers and repairs while seven eighteen would only have the dealers.
Would have a used car, right.
For used cars. And is that acceptable to the applicant? Will that allow things to work?
I believe that will allow things to work for today, and then is it still my understanding that if it's. Found that the repairs. Needs to be on seven eighteen also for the use through DOT, that office staff would have the administrative ability to. To take care of that without a hearing, so there's no trouble down, no hearings needed down the line.
Well, I mean, we, we would have to see proof that that that's required by the state. Again, you're not doing any repairs on that property.
Yeah.
So why would they require a repair's license if there's no repairs being done? That wouldn't make it.
My only question is, is I I believe that if you have a used car, you must have, if if you have a used car dealer's. License that you must have some ability to repair those cars cars or fix them up.
And and it, right, and they could have a written agreement with the the facility next door for repair.
That that could work.
I I mean, I'm trying to clean things up, I know. Things get done from the past and they get done wrong for years and years. And I'm just trying to clean it up for us. And and I think that's a viable way to do it. It lets you go forward with your project. And.
Yeah.
It makes everything work. Lori, is there an easy, quick way to just merge the two properties administratively and just call it seven eighteen?
No.
No?
It'd have to be done legally by deed.
Correct.
And then you'd have two principal structures, so that's that.
Well, you'd have a campus.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Which is what they have now, for all intents and purposes, they have a campus. It just happened to have a property line in between the two.
But then is it a campus, though, because of that property line? And and again, that's that because these are two distinct properties, that's kind of where I'm stuck. And and I, I like the chairman's proposal because I think that's clean, I mean, the K seven has existed on seven ten.
So, I mean, it's. I I I'm open for any other suggestions.
So I have this legal opinion, which I believe everybody's had.
Yeah.
Seven ten, seven eighteen Enfield Street, it was done June twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, and it references. And of course, it's not attached, but the attached nineteen ninety-four DMV license reflects storage at seven eighteen for the primary use at seven ten. Site plan, plot plan provided shows four vehicles, display spaces on seven eighteen Enfield Street. So that kind of goes along with that, I think.
So there may have been a used car K seven or seven eighteen at one point, I I. I've not seen it. And I don't have any history of it. Well, basically, that's what I'm trying to do, only I'm trying to make sure there's a, that the state has the proper paperwork for it that way.
I would also like to make sure that the the applicant and the the owners here are properly protected. Given that these are two properties, right, I mean, that that's ultimately what we're trying to do here is maintain the.
Correct.
Maintain it for them as well.
So is it my understanding the proposal is to. Used cars and repairs license on seven ten and then used cars on seven eighteen at the current time?
Correct.
That's my understanding.
As as Lori pointed out, the state would say that you have to have the ability to repair cars with a used car. A lot, but you could simply do that with a written agreement for the. Seven ten property as a written agreement to maintain or repair the cars for used car dealer. Because the state just says that you have to have the ability to repair them.
I I think that's, I think that's a viable option. We're happy with that, and you know, if if for some reason something came up and it was. There there was a challenge under DOT regulations or whatever it may be, we can just, we can come back and go through. Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like a. A logical plan.
Does anybody have any other questions? Alright, I guess we're not really having a public hearing, so we just need to take roll call, Rich.
Yeah, um. Do I need to read the most of revised motion?
Yes.
Okay, Lori, is there anything specific I need to do to revise the motion other than taking out the seven ten?
Don't have it in front of me, hold on.
And, Mr. Chairman, do do we need a motion to approve?
Well, here's, here's my suggestion, and this is, we're going to have to have two votes. So the application, the the. So, the application, the, the we have one application in front of us for seven ten, Edville Street, the K seven, with automotive repair facility and car dealer. Dealer and repairs license. They're going to need the used car dealer for the other side. Um, do we want them, do we want to? Do we make, can we do that twice tonight without having that, uh, without having the paperwork, Lori, or?
Certainly, you, you always have the, the ability to modify your, your motion.
Well, we can add that to the agenda because we don't need a public hearing, correct?
Right.
Right. So we will
You just take action on it sep- with separate addresses, if you want to do it that way.
That's what I'm looking at doing.
Yeah.
So our first motion, Rich, will be for seven ten. And then we will take a motion for seven eighteen after.
Okay, and I'm, as I read the motion, I need to revise it based on what we've talked about.
Correct.
Okay. So, motion to approve ZBA number twenty twenty one dash oh one dash thirteen for seven ten Enfield Street. Auto-location approval application for a dealer's and repair's license. Melissa Gury and Kimberly Novak, co-executrix to the estate of Matthew Porcello, owners Batool Express Incorporated, applicants map twenty nine lot fifteen, BL zone, according to the reference plans in the resolution.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, Mo, were you the first?
No, you were, you just made the motion.
I think that was supposed to include used car sales there, too.
It was a dealer and repair's license.
Okay, perfect.
Um, any discussion in the motion? Dancing none, roll call, please.
Second, Charlie, you were the second, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. Maurice LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew Urbanowitz, or Banowitz, sorry.
Yes.
Charles Masterbirdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Richard Storni, yes. Five zero.
Now, you can go with the same type of motion for seven eighteen.
Yep. But that will only be for the used car sales license.
Used car sales only, and that's how you want to state it.
Okay. Motion to approve ZBA twenty twenty one dash oh one thirteen for seven eighteen Enfield Street. Auto-location approval application for a used car sales license, Melissa Gury, Kimberly Novak, co-executrix to the estate of Matthew Porcello, owners, Batool Express Incorporated, applicants, map twenty nine lot fifteen, BL zone, according to the reference plans in the resolution.
Motion made, do I have a second?
I second.
Is that Andrew?
Seconded by Charlie.
Charlie.
Any discussion? Rich, I would like to see the word only in there after used car sales. Because they're not doing any automotive repair on that facility.
Do we need to modify the motion based on that?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you, are you modifying the motion to include the word only before used car sales license?
Yes.
I, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Andrew.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Maurice LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew Urbanowitz.
Yes.
Charles Masterbirdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Richard Storni, yes. Motion passes five zero, zero.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Um, and, uh, Mr. Chair, just before we read any, anything out, um, I just wanted to let you know that the next applicant has requested to have this item, uh, tabled until the next meeting.
So we will not open the hearing then, and then we don't have to do anything with it, correct?
I, I believe the motion would be to table it to the next meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion to table, uh, ZBA? Uh, two thousand and one dash oh two dash oh eight, sixty nine
I make a motion to table.
Made by Charlie, do I have a second? When I want you guys to talk, nobody does.
Who, who said it first?
That's the same, it's the easier name to spell.
Roll call, please.
Maurice LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew Urbanowitz.
I'll abstain.
Charles Masterbirdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
And Richard Storni, yes. Motion passes four zero one.
All right.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that one?
Excuse me.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
That brings us down to item C, could you read the legal notice, please?
Oh, Mr. Chair, this one has been withdrawn.
Oh. Okay.
The motion would be just to withdraw without prejudice, or to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Do you want me to read the motion? The motion to accept the withdrawal of ZBA number twenty twenty dash ten dash twenty seven for nine Hamilton Court, variance application to allow over twenty percent lot coverage, Kevin Hickinbotham, owner applicant map eighty three, lot one seventy, R thirty three zone with, without prejudice.
Do I have a second? Second, made by Rob Quaznicki. Roll call, please.
Maurice LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew Urbanowitz.
Yes.
Charles Masterbirdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Richard Storni, yes. Motion passes five zero, zero.
All right, well, that was easy. Um, in our packet, we have a couple sets of minutes. Uh, our first set of minutes are January twenty fifth, two thousand and one Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read through them. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second, okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Maurice LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew Urbanowitz.
Yes.
Charles Masterbirdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
And Richard Storni, yes. Do I do the alternates as well on this one or no?
No.
Okay.
Um, February eighth, two thousand and twenty one, special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Maurice LaRosa.
Yes.
Andrew Urbanowitz.
Yes.
Charles Masterbirdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Richard Storni, yes.
Uh, correspondent staff reports, got any more, ladies?
I believe everybody is, um, all set for the Connecticut Land Use. Um, the, uh, or Connecticut Bar Association, um, seminar, we did receive the books in the office, so um, if you want to stop by and pick them up, let us know, other than that, we'll send them out, um, to you with the police auxiliary. Um, I haven't talked to Lori, but I was hoping maybe to send them out this Friday.
Would that be
What was that, Mo?
Would that be easier than everybody trying to come in to get, pick them up?
Yeah, if we could get the auxiliary to do it, we will.
Okay.
It's safe for everybody.
Pound constables to do it, they don't do anything. Um, we have no other business, correct? So, I need a motion to adjourn. That was, motion to adjourn? Or adjourned?